Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education of April 20th, 2021. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Skip McCullough, who was a biology teacher at Clay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the fervency of the justice of law.
Thank you. Do we have the roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Magich.
Yep.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Muller?
Here.
Can I turn this?
Yes.
Please turn off all of your electronic devices so we don't get interrupted. We are going to skip the executive session this evening. We're going to move right down to a motion to a that the agenda is written, please. So, second. Oh, second discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Oops, wait a second.
Back up.
I need to move. Motion to accept the agenda as written with the addendum. Want to make sure.
Including the addendum, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Muller, Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mr. Whitely?
No.
Okay, Mr. Rowe is not here yet, so we'll go through your public participation. Any public participation?
No, I don't think we have any cards. The cards are out, so I don't think anyone has given us a card. Now, I know he was coming into the building, Mr. Sandwich said. Oh, there he is, all right. So.
Take a moment and read.
So, we're gonna have a just a re-presentation with Mike Rowe, Mr. Rowe, our architect for the Performing Arts Center. And I did just to him, I did tell him, I thought we might have an executive session, so I said, well, I'm a couple minutes late, but we'll be in the executive session. But that has changed, so we're gonna jump right into, if that's okay. Mike, why don't you come on over to that little platform up there?
We'll do it on the fly.
Yeah, we're gonna do it. That's right, you're ready.
Hey, your turn.
So, what I have is, so let me back up. So anyways, about, it's been quite a while since we've had a public discussion on the idea of this Performing Arts Center or renovation of our old warehouse, which is just adjacent to our mid-millennium Clay High School back here. But a couple, literally a couple of years ago now, we started this idea to put together some drawings and some ideas about expanding the theater arts program at Clay High School, which in this case, for this building, would mean a dance studio, a recording studio, and like a change area, you know, some bathrooms, it's a change area, and then an additional like storage slash woodworking area kind of in the back. So obviously, we were just kind of getting rolling on that idea, and Mike and his team put together these drawings and started within COVID, get literally right there in that march, and the idea kind of stopped right there. But, or at least the movement forward stopped, but the idea is still alive. And so later on in the meeting, I'll be asking the board to approve the ability for us to go out to bid and receive bids in for this particular project. But I thought, because we haven't had really any public discussion about this in a while, I asked Mike to come in and answer any questions the board might have, just give kind of a brief overview of kind of what, where we're at at this point, and what needs to be done maybe to move forward to get the project rolling. So with that said, I might just ask Mike to kind of give a little history of what got us to this point, and I can move this forward however you'd like it, so.
Oh, you're good. So yeah, this is just a color floor plan that we put together. It's been a little while.
Yeah.
January of 19. So obviously, the colors that are the specialty areas there, there's the orange color, as Hal mentioned, the, you operate in that front lobby space, that would be more of an open gathering space.
Is this, do you want to remember? This is a remodel of an existing building?
Correct, right here, we got the old garage that's sitting basically between the administration building and the high school there, so it doesn't, it wouldn't look anything like it looks now. And so repurposing that, obviously, the structure that's there, the integrity is in pretty decent shape, there's some tuck pointing stuff on the corners, brickwork, a little bit of restoration work on that end, but I mean, the shelf space itself is pretty structurally sound, and so trying to rework with what is there. Most of the load-bearing walls would be all intact. We got a couple of columns that are in the middle of the building that we're gonna basically replace, just because it gives a flexibility, we'll look at the larger multi-use space there for, what Hal talks about. The larger, basically, orange space would be the multi-use, so that's where performances can take place, whether it be music, dance, whatnot. So the smaller orange spaces on the right-hand side, then more of the recording studio, flexible space, there's a small couple of recording studios, soundboards, that type of thing, so we can get into all the different performing arts. The green spaces there are just supplemental, so you got a couple changing rooms, obviously, restrooms and so forth to support all those different spaces, and then just one single office up there in the top, the pace there.
And just to add the green spaces and the locker rooms, if you know anything about the theater arts, or Mr. Sneed, the kids are changing in his choir room now for all the performances, they just, they don't have a place to go, a locker room or any real facility. This is right outside of the building, and it's not as close as we could possibly get without adding on to the existing building, so there might be a little walk outside to get between changes, but that's part of the reason it's on this side and structured that way.
The one thing that's not shown on this plan, which we had worked out, the backside of this building, putting on a small, basically, storage, it's not really storage, it's more of a building seams and that type of thing, because there's no great spot to do that, I think what Tom's doing now is building on a stage and stuff, it's just, it's really tight. So what would go on the backside of this building is that ability to basically build those sets, build those seam work, and it's about 1,000 square foot, it's about as big as we can put on the backside and still maintain that loop around for the bus traffic to go, because they have a drop-off zone behind this building. So, any questions about the floor plan? All right, keep going, and we did a couple renderings on here. Now, what the final material is on the outside, what we were trying to do in the beginning, it's obviously a red brick color that's on there now, most of your campuses are not red, obviously, so we thought about trying to skin some of those areas with a brick definitely done, try to tie back into the existing brick of your buildings, but we're gonna look at that a little bit more and see what the right answer is, but then clad some of the other spots with some cement work panel, and just to kind of give it its own identity as far as performing arts and that type of thing. But all the existing overhead doors that you see there would be infilled with storefronts, so that actually if you go to the next rendering, I think. So at night, when there's performing arts activities going on, you'll be able to see that would all be fluctuated out, so when you're driving down this road here, you'll be able to see what's going on, whether it's a dance performance or a performance, any kind, so it could be somebody there, a small band group meeting for that evening. Trying to think of those. So here's that flexible space that we talked about, that larger room, so that would be, again, it could be a dance performance one night, the next night it could be, you know, sort of choir event, whatever. The flexibility of that space, we purposely wouldn't leave it, why don't we have the ability to have curtains closed and so forth for acoustic purposes?
And this, and just so everybody knows, I mean, this obviously isn't gonna take the place of the auditorium for large-scale performances, but the idea of bringing in small kind of community-based things and other ideas that I know Mr. Sneed has in his head about, you know, utilizing this space and the training that can go on in a space like this, we just don't have available to us moving forward. So obviously, this multi-use space right now is kind of showing dance. I know, like, you look up at the lights, he wants, the idea behind it is to look very industrial, very modern, you know, kind of on the inside, and eye-catching for kids, eye-catching for the community, you know, feels like something that's very artistic in a way, that feels that way, and I know that's what Mr. Sneed hopes it feels like if this thing does come to fruition.
Would this follow the same use permit that we do with the stadium and?
I think that's a great question. My vision is, is that we would certainly allow the community to access this, and we've had lots of discussions on that, we'd have to come up with, obviously, a permit-type
How would it be any different than the different tiered levels we have currently in the district for usage?
Oh, I just think the cost, we just have to see what availability costs, those types of things, but again, it's coming up with a process that, you know, because I have like sports teams in there, but what I can see is, right, in the recording studio specifically, we had a lot of conversation about that. I mean, you know how many of us wanted to be, you know, in a band when we were in high school, or wanted to put a CD together or something like that, you know, and be discovered? Well, you know, I could see this studio down the road also playing that role for kids that maybe aren't even in theater arts, or aren't even a part of something like that, but just have this dream, and now they have this, you know, studio right there available, so we would just have to work out a timing.
Just, like I said, just, you know, follow the same thing, employee, community, then, you know.
Yeah, I'm open to that, and that's, we haven't had that specific of a discussion yet, but we could absolutely do that.
Will that be, I'll say, used as a classroom during the day for some?
Yeah, Mr. Sneed's office would be.
That small room, office up at the top of the.
Yeah, right here. Yeah.
Nope.
No, right here.
There's a blue box.
Blue box, right there.
There you go.
This is the recording studio on this side. This is like waiting room, this is where the equipment is, this is like a room where, let's say, that's the enclosed, right? Kind of like the enclosed room.
A lot of times, so when you say recording studio, a lot of people have mixed thoughts of what that is, so we've got a lot of recording studios for like local libraries and so forth, where you'd be amazed at the usage on it, just people doing podcasts, or like teachers doing lesson plans and such things, it's just, it's crazy how much use they get just for the flexibility of different groups, whether it's one person, two people, whatever, it's not always the vision of a big rock band, and it's like.
Right, yeah.
Kind of maybe that's like one end of the spectrum, but the other end is, you know, a lot of times people are trying, especially now virtual, so if you're doing a resume or a job search, whatever, having the ability to go into a room like that, and it's already all set up to do that virtual thing. So I mean, it's, like I said, we've done a lot for a lot of public use buildings that high uses right now.
Is there space for audience who are standing and sitting in here?
So yeah, so in the bigger room, that's where there would be more of a, like a performance activity done, and we'd have like the ability to put seating and chairs and so forth in there. Now, on the right side, where we got the music, that's, that area right there, actually, Hal, if you go down, there's a couple of renderings, I think, of that side. It's right there, so like, that's the bigger spot in the front, so you're looking in to see what that small recording is, so people can be looking in to see what they're doing inside of that recording studio.
Can you go back up to the layout now?
Yeah, hold on.
So.
I'm in there.
In that yellow section in front, this here.
Oh, yeah.
All of a sudden, that, so.
That's a certain.
Wall that separates the two, would that be, that, I suppose, be a, the front one out?
This one here?
Yeah, is that?
Right now.
Be a one that, that's the initial that you could add TV in the yellow area and kind of expand the meeting area?
What we were doing there is basically create that corridor, so that, let's say there's a function or a topic of class going on in that bigger spot, you can still be able to float around to the other side, recording studio and aspect, and still be able to get through that. Now, in an event like, you know, let's say your parents are coming in for like a smaller band group or something that evening, sure, they can sit outside there, outside, but it's a glass area, so that.
So it's not a partition wall that you can slide to expand all this space?
No, and part of that is to kind of try and contain as much of whatever's going on in there, so it doesn't disrupt like the other side type scenario. That's kind of one of the curtains, I think, showing that, like, preschool curtain brought over. Keep going, now, there's maybe the other one, that's that lobbies when you're walking up front, lobby, so that's kind of like a flexible space when you walk in the building, where it gives an opportunity for any kind of awards that have been, you know, any, they got performing arts, it's a display case, but then also that couch is just showing a reference there, but that's kind of like a smaller group meeting area too, it's just the flexibility of all those rooms, just having that chance to do that, and then obviously, plus some sort of a donor area as well, to work out things, you know.
With this being more of a, I'll say, major remodel, is this being built, not a new build, how do you, what do you expect the increased building costs to affect us on
Well, it's obviously, it's more accountable than a new construction, let's put that way, just because your infrastructure is there. There is some utilities we'll have to keep back into the building just to support.
What about the building materials, price supply, wood, all that stuff, sky dropping, would that impact this, you know, remodel?
It'll make us rethink how we design things, like, for instance, what's in their building, now you got bar stools that are out there. Unfortunately, right now, bar stools are like six months out, so we have to rethink how we frame things, so it's just knowing what the industry is going on right now and how we frame, there is no wood in the project, so thankfully, lumber's triple the cost, but on the metal side, I mean, it's time to be framing the rest of that out of concrete block, some skim veneers and so forth, but construction cost is definitely an item that discussion, I've given Hal some sort of budgetary numbers of where I think that caused the square footage really go, just based on project with bidding right now, but the math seems like they're exponentially going up.
Well, and I guess, one of my hopes was that with the board approving the idea to go out to bid was to see if what we think reality is, is reality, right? So if we think this is a million-dollar project, and it comes in at 1.5, well, then we gotta rethink what we're gonna do, just using round numbers. If we think this is a million-dollar project, and it comes in at, you know, 950 or 900 or whatever, then, you know, we're feeling pretty good about it, or, you know, so without actually getting out, now, would you mind, Mike, just maybe talking to more about the timelines that we've kind of roughly talked about?
So our drawings right now, I mean, we've basically gotten in on the architecture side, we're big 30% through the architecture, now, we still have all the engineering to chase back behind, but we'll be checking in, so I mean, you start to go through the schematic to diet and, diet and all the construction documents, so we'll be checking in with an estimator, making sure that what we're designing is still in budget, and figure out whatever we have to do to value engineer it, make sure we're achieving that budget, so that when we do go out to bid, we understand where our costs are, and make sure we don't have any surprises. I don't want to surprise you as much as you do, I don't want to take this as a $1 million drive, get a 1.5 million dollar bid, that's just, it does nobody any good, so we're gonna know that before we go out to bid. Timeline, I mean, we're months out, I mean, probably before we finish the set of drawings, ideally it'd be nice to be out to bids, oh, by the end of summer, so that we get foundations in for the addition component, get everything basically in before winter conditions, all of the shelves constructed, like, give the winter, the rest of the winter crawling into the work, which they're looking for work for winter time, you know, it's a great winter time project, so that's the ideal timeline to try and hit.
And the reason that I'm bringing it to you, I guess, so early in the project is, first of all, make everyone aware that it's still kind of alive, but it also allows us to ask Mike to kind of move forward, because I don't want to ask Mike to move forward if something that it's not something we're actually getting out to bid with. So, you know, obviously, I feel like we have, we've kind of talked about what funding would be used for something like this, we have some, you know, some donations, we've talked about the use of, the sale of some of the land that we've recently sold, we've talked about using some PI funds or Medicaid reimbursement funds, so those are the large core areas that we've kind of discussed that we would use for this project, and I think it would be an awesome kickstart to the performing arts, and just, you know, another project for Oregon to move forward with, you know? And that's, you know, if you're not moving forward, you're going backwards, and I really feel like we've done some things for the athletic side of the house, and now I want to do something that supports the art side of the house, and then we'll see where we go next. And Mike's been wonderful, he's been available, he's, his ideas are great, really, he's, you know, obviously, his kids go to this district, he lives in this district, and very supportive of all projects.
So now with, like, what we did with the trust spots and naming, has anybody approached you about naming and?
No, no naming, but I think, I think with, I think with the support of board moving forward and we go with Mike, that's our next step, absolutely, to reach back out for the fundraising that we were, we were contemplating, so we can reduce as much of the cost to the district as possible. So I think we could absolutely have something like that happen, yeah. And we've got, like Mike said, if we're not going out to bid by the end of summer, and it's April now, we've got several ones, and then really, you're not even, you're not even starting any actual movement to what, October, November?
You still gotta go through the bid process, we got basically three weeks, three weeks to a month worth of bidding process, getting a permit and so forth, so just when you're going out, just gotta get through that process. But it'd be nice, like I said, ideally, to have somebody on board by that October-ish period, so that any of that, any foundation work can be done for winter conditions that have settled.
So any last questions you have? I don't want to keep us here all night, but I asked Mike just to kind of come be available and kind of put it out there. I'm very excited about the idea of this, I really hope it comes to fruition, and, you know, I can see big, this is just me, but those Hollywood lights, you know, and we had on the top, they're flashing out of the place, put a spotlight on Oregon. Well, Mike, thank you for coming out, rushing right up here, I appreciate it very much.
No problem.
Any last questions? We're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike, appreciate it, time, yep. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we will move on to the church reports. All right, thank you, Mrs. Muller. Kind of muffled, I'm just gonna take it off, I hope you don't mind here, I'll protect you. The first thing I'll point out is, Item C, there is no need for an updated appropriation measure at this time, so we have an estimate of what ESTER III is, but not enough to make it on the appropriation. My report's born in front of you. First item is just going through what I always call the true cash report, and our revenues are up about 5.6% compared to last year at this time. The largest amount is due to a timing difference, we got our homestead loanback money, about 900,000 or so, from the state of Ohio, a month earlier than last year, so that's not gonna maintain, but that's why it's up this year, this month. Again, we sell increased real estate tax collections due to utility property, and then the state of Ohio's worker comp, excuse me, refunds, we have at least three of those, and that's been a contributing factor as well. On our expense side, we're pretty much as expected, our purchase services and supplies are down when students aren't in buildings and buses aren't on the road, that makes a difference, so I'll probably be adjusting those in the upcoming five-year forecast, which will be in May, so that's something to look forward to. I wanted to make sure everybody understood, under new business, Item C is actually coming from my offices, it's a resolution accepting the amounts of rates that's determined by the Budget Commission. What that is, is once the state approves the valuations, and I have it attached to this report, so you can see the actual resolution, once the Lucas County submits the valuations on the effective village rates to the state of Ohio, they come back, and then they do a calculation of what they think that will collect, so that's what that is, it's an annual approval that we do every year. On the actual resolution, you can see, I wrote on it, so you can see which fund is which, the bond retirement fund, the OO2, the OO1 is general fund, and the OO3 is for capital, or I'm sorry, the PI fund, which is capital projects. You can see, if you look at the resolution, the actual voted millage, which is 63.1, and the inside millage, which is six mills, for a total of 69.10 voted mills, our actual effective millage rate is 43.996107 right now, and I use this for the five-year, just to compare my numbers, but this resolution is based on a calendar year, because that's how they collect taxes, we are on a fiscal year, so I just wanted to explain that, because I know there's some questions, but every year we go through this, and I'll talk more about this later, but, or not later, next month. The taxpayer is, I, it doesn't sound like much, but we are getting a 0.1 mil reduction in our collection, that's due to the rollback on the bond, because we finally had some increase in our valuations, and so the bond millage is able to roll back slightly, and that's even before we refinance, so that'll go back a little more. I just wanted people aware, this little yellow section, I wanted people aware of the ESTER funding allocations we've received or will be receiving. ESTER I was 444,000, ESTER II is 1.7 million, and ESTER III, we're expected to get 3.9 million, that's our initial allocation. It's gonna be interesting for us to use this money and preserve the general fund, in the sense that we have to be careful how we spend it, because I don't know how we would go back to the community asking for $6 million to replace, but we'll have to be very careful on how we move forward and use it for, a lot of initial stuff has been used specifically for pandemic issues, supplies, additional stamping that's required for cleaning and things like that. So these are just the allocations, and we can discuss them all later, but I wanted you to see how much they are.
I know, but ESTER I, what is that off right now?
No, it's mostly spent, we used it a lot for the substitutes, we have a lot of substitutes.
But it's all encumbered, right? I mean, we know where it's going.
Yes, well, no, it's not, no, it's not all encumbered, the CARES money, we received an additional amount that isn't listed on here, that for the CARES amount, that was 190,000, and we spent all the $2,100 of it, $2,100 is encumbered, and will be spent on, you know, in the coming weeks. This was mostly spent on, oh, forgive me, I feel like, we had all kinds of subs for classified and certified, when somebody was off for COVID for two weeks, we had to have a sub in there.
The one we used was staff containment, so no one would have let go.
Yes, yes.
So is the deadline on this one associated with these funds, has to be used by?
Yes, the first one, I think, is the end of this year, actually, I have it in my progress.
Probably September.
Yeah.
I know September of '22 is the ESTER II, and I hear, or '23, and I hear an ESTER III is '24.
Yeah, so we have some time on this, but I just, I'm just pointing out how much we have, okay?
So I guess my question, Hal and I talked about this briefly when I met with Hal, at some point, we need, once we get to the finalized ESTER III, we need to kind of.
No, no question.
Know how we're gonna find out what we're using on, and, you know.
Precisely, yeah, we just got this ESTER III, we got the number Friday, and in that time, we got, what, at least two or three different numbers, so I'm not putting anything in stone until we get something real, but we are very sure, or at least it's in the CCIP, the 1.7 million, and I think you were, were shared, and we can share it with you to our board, what the plans are of that, there's the technology, you know, curriculum thing that, you know, we fall behind with.
Just so the board knows, there's 14 areas that ESTER funds can be spent on, and so for each of these ESTER funds, we have to go into what we use, it's called a CCIP, which is our online, this, it's all connected to title, title funding, so this money is connected to our low-income students, and title funding that we get, so it's all connected to that, so we have to go into the same system, and we have to allocate these funds in one of these, or, you know, throughout these 14 areas, which we have done already, just to get it, just to be able to draw down on any portions of it, so that's been completed, we're waiting on the state to approve the ESTER II funds as we speak right now, but a good portion, a good million of it is technology and software that we need, that has come at an awesome time, because many of our Google Chromebooks are in need, you're gonna see a motion on the addendum tonight that is kind of referencing a little bit of where some of this, this funding will go, and also, a lot of our software is expiring, usually we get, I wanna say, is it five-year licenses, three- to five-year licenses for our software? Six-year licenses? Six years, so we'll be able to, I think, pay for a lot of these licenses, otherwise we would have to come up with out of our general fund to pay for these.
The other thing is, so.
What does that stand for?
Although.
Because you said it's related to title funding, what is it, the CARES Act money was, is this still related to the whole COVID?
CARES Act was specifically for cleaning supplies and things like that, I did not bring that folder on the, I'm gonna let myself down here, but the ESTER is, isn't it for?
Education Stabilization Fund, these are all federal dollars that are flowing through the state to the local.
Due to COVID?
The 3.9 is a direct relation to Biden's last one-point, whatever, 2-point trillion.
It's tied to a title funding.
Correct, that's how it flows through to us, at least in the state of Ohio, I don't know how other states.
But a large part of ESTER II, the ESTER II is a little trickier, because truthfully, and I don't know what the ESTER III requirements will be, the ESTER II is truly to help you with circumstances that were created by COVID, for instance, the tutoring, we're gonna be doing, I think they've already started after-school tutoring, we're able to pay for that, because kids fell behind, obviously, and then there's gonna be some summer tutoring, I think there was almost, I'm gonna forgive the number, I think around 25,000 between transportation and tutoring, that's part of it, so we should provide that, I did not bring it tonight, but.
Yeah, we could do a full, I think, maybe, we could do a full ESTER breakdown for the board, and.
Yeah, I think we should.
Let's go more about the three, I hope.
Yeah, we don't know.
But we have time, so I just want to let everybody know, it's, you know, when it's put in the CCIP, it gets approved by the state, it's, there're just numbers sitting in there, it could be adjusted, and the state allows that, you can go in and make adjustments to any one of those categories, really, at any time you want, so, you know, it's kind of like draft one, and then if a different need comes up, six months down the road, we can shift something out of something and be, so I just want the board to know, it's one. board to know, it's one-time money, but it's not, has to be spent like in six months.
No, we've got time. I only wanted you to see the amount, and I want to get it in our brain, and we're all, it's in everyone's brain, that this is one-time money, and therefore to be very careful how we spend it and very, very well thought out, because this would be very hard to replace. This is about, you know, strategic.
One of the four key categories allow for wages and salaries, or anything, if you can comment.
If you are, for instance, we did hire additional custodians through this period for the, excuse me, I keep wanting to say spraying, but it's the custodians that were disinfected.
Disinfecting.
Disinfecting, I'm sorry.
Mr. Zavinsky, there is the last category, which is the catch-all for the entire thing. Presser too, anyways, if it's the same for S R three, we'll find out. So there's other activities necessary to maintain the operations and continuity of service, L E A, and continuing to employ existing staff to the L E A. So, yeah, it doesn't specifically say anything about salaries, wages, or benefits.
No.
But it's a category that I'm sure it can fit under, but that is what I think Mrs. Ruth is trying to say, is that we just have to be very careful that the money is spent in a way that is sustainable moving forward.
And one of the things that we're talking about, and other districts are as well, because we, Treasurers have been talking about this, one of the items we put in that other area is you think about how badly our sports were hit in terms of any form of income. We struggle anyways, but we still had to buy, all these paid, all the officials, people like that. Now, those are purchase services for us, so we are allowed to transfer those costs into S R two. So that is where some of those monies are going, directly related to the pandemic, because we can only have 20% of the, you know. We haven't put anything for food service yet, but that area's been hit too. We have a great balance, we started out with an awesome balance, but, you know, think about it, we are selling meals, you know, so it's, there's areas we're going to have to look at to help out because of the pandemic. So just wanted you to know the amount, so we could get it numbered. I have a couple, real quick items, the auditor state, I just got notified yesterday, I guess, or Friday. They're going to put us out for annual, our annual audit out to bid for independent public auditors. I had the state audit last year, and then they're going to put us back out again. So I've done the initial form, and I'll let you know what happens as we get out of the bidding. And then the conversion process, we're going from the web to the state, I'm sorry, we're going from the current server base to the web state base. They're actually going to flip us over on April 23rd, I think that's Friday, so we'll be using both platforms for a while, so hopefully we won't get too bogged down. I know it'll all be smooth, that's my hope. So that's my report, unless there are further questions, but I want you aware of those things.
May I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please?
So who?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zavinsky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Moving on to item nine, consent agenda, and under B is the addendum, which is the resignation of a classified employee. Are there any items under the board which hold from the regular meeting consent agenda? Here in none, a motion is needed to vote on consent agenda items. Can you have a motion, please?
So move.
Second? Our second, discussion.
Yeah, I got some questions, too. There's so much information, and I want to kind of go through these real quick. How, and obviously, give sort of how, and the first one would be non-renewal long-term substitutes. Any of these, any of these going to be needed for another long-term assignment that, or can, next year, they kind of.
Don't get it.
Or.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Number two, can you just explain what number two, non-renewal supplemental?
Yeah, each year we non-renew all supplemental contracts across the district in the spring under board policy. It's a one-year for all coaches, not stores.
All of it.
It's all, school-based, sports-based, all, everything.
Okay. The resignation of these two that will be looking to replace, but they hopefully will replace them in future, moving forward.
Yes.
Is the school psychologists that are, like a new position?
No, we had a retirement, Julie, we have three school psychologists, we employ one retirement, so Jacob will be replacing Mrs. Kessel.
And all the, and then, kind of, just normal two to four years.
Correct.
Plus the geologists, or, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then we have the same with the teacher, teacher limited and continued.
And the, can you just explain, I don't know, it just wants to go into two, if we don't have a background, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, so Terry retired several years ago. She's our fantastic, awesome transportation supervisor, but she recently informed us she's going to officially officially retire, I guess. You don't even know the date, it's going to be in October, I knew it was fall, but she is still working between the end of her contract and October, so we need to hire her. And we just kept it as the one year, because it's really irrelevant, rather than trying to tie the dates, August 1st, we're hired for the year, but she's, you're also accepting her resignation as of October 1st, does that make sense?
And she needs a new contract to cover the.
Because she's always been on a one-year since she's been retired, correct.
It was a retired, retired.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And anything you want to say about the new food service?
Well, yeah, Julie's here, I mean, I haven't approved it yet, I was going to kind of wait, but.
That's fine.
We can do that at the end, yeah.
I think that's all the comments, but I don't know.
Yeah, and you'll see, you know, there's different categories for the, for example, Penny, Andrew, and Carol are under the non-union employees, so it's just how we separate them to make sure it's very clean and understandable. Yeah, April is always the big hiring, big month, you know, it's a big deal for a lot of people, and so I appreciate the board's support on that.
Thank you.
So that leaves discussion, any further discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mag, or Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mr. Zavinsky?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Wait, real quick, though, if you don't mind, Mrs. Muller, I'm sorry. I want to introduce Julie to the board. So Julie Kalasic is going to be our new food service supervisor, taking over for Vicky Laurel, and so we wanted to welcome her tonight. She's coming to us from Rossford, where she's worked for quite a while in the same area, kind of combo, doing food service and transportation, so she had quite a role over there in Rossford, but we're very excited to have her, her experience and knowledge and her personality, everything I've heard is nothing but fantastic, so we are very excited to have her on board. So Julie, do you want to say anything?
Oh, wow, this is pretty exciting. Was it anything I expected or saw coming? So it happened pretty quick, so I'm very, very excited for the new challenge. This is my husband, David. I was at Rossford 13 years apart from that, I was at Lake, and food service is my passion, not so much transportation. So I've been to Bevold for about five years, and so the excitement to go back to just food services, that's just awesome, because I just, there's so much that I haven't been able to do with Bevold jobs, so I'm so excited about getting back into that.
Well, you're not thinking about being more vocal? You're not going to think on both of it?
No. I told him when I met him that that was the, you know, was the old brand.
I tried, Mr. Zavinsky, I didn't look out.
I promised I would help, though. It'd be hell if I promised I would help, so, yeah. And I don't even mind driving the roads, it's just the, we all know that we're looking at shortage of drivers across the country, and it's really hard, because kids, it's replacing with anybody, you have to replace someone with somebody who's certified, so.
Feeding our kids is a big, big deal, and obviously you know a lot about it, so thank you, congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Yep, you bet.
Okay, new business. Item A, North Point Educational Service Center contract. We need a motion to approve the year 2021 contract with North Point Educational Service Center, and to approve the amount, it should be 2021.
It should be 2122, how many times we look at this?
2122. And to approve the amount of $490,000 to be deducted from state foundation payments for the following programs, preschool teacher aid assigned to district, itinerant preschool services, preschool assessment, OT, PT, APE services to the district, educational assistant interpreter services, and preschool supervisor services and others. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? This is something we do every year with them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, what you're actually approving is the deduction amount that Mrs. Ruth allows for them to, you know, the total contract for the whole year is closer to 800,000, a little over 800 and some thousand total, but what we do is kind of prepay, so what you're approving is that prepay piece for the most part.
Coming out over, not like prepay, it'll start, we'll kind of July 1st and come out divided by 20.
Right, over the course of the day, so.
24 days, so it just gives them some cash flow.
And then they do this for the rest of it.
So when, like, when's the additional building coming, is that at the end of the year, that?
Yeah, they do a true-up at the end, too.
Yeah.
Or it's actually kind of quarterly, but then at the very end, they hit us with the end of it, yeah.
Why do we only do it with the 490, that whole amount, the reason?
Because I don't want, I want to owe them money, I don't want them owing me.
No, that's, just curious, do we really do that? All right, thanks.
Okay, that was the discussion, may we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zavinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Item B, athletic trips. We need a motion to approve the following high school athletic trips, wrestling to Orlando, Florida, boys soccer to Strongsville, volleyball to Cedar Point Convention Center, and volleyball every Thursday after July 4th, premier league in Long Beach. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
The second? Third? Discussion?
Question now, and a couple of these, so, any of these have anything to do with prepayments that go to another third party, like some of the band stuff we did that was canceled when we had that?
I'm not aware of that, but I don't know the specifics of each of these, so I can follow up that question.
And the new volleyball? Is the convention center for a tournament? Is it more of a field trip? Do you?
Oh, I'm sure it's for a tournament. I don't.
Yeah, so with the boy soccer, like, with the boy soccer, we would just, you know, as parents, we would have to take care of our own costs and expenses and those kind of things, but, you know, it wasn't something that was like the band, you know, I get what you're saying with the touring company, it wasn't like that.
Yeah, except for one, the soccer says it's a tournament, the volleyball.
Right.
Doesn't say it's a tournament, so I was curious if there's something else besides a tournament.
I'm sure they're for tournaments.
And then volleyball, the premier, is, you know, are we passing people to the team to come here?
That must be what we're doing, yeah.
Why would you do that? Why would?
Yeah, I don't have the specifics, I don't have the, I mean, I guess, we asked Mr. Beach, our A D, for the trips each spring, and he gives us the trips, so I guess I don't ask specific, if we want to, if we want, if you're not comfortable with it, and.
But is this one, the issue that came up early this last season, we told them not to do stuff, had someone come in and make them pay, so now we're going to not make them pay, and now we're going to pass it off?
I don't know. I don't know. So we can, we can.
And I think that I'd like to hold that one if we could, just.
Just number four?
Yeah, just number one, the last, I'll find one.
It's fine with me.
I'll get your. I just want to see if four is a way around what we brought up, what we brought up earlier this past season, if this is a way around it, or if it's tied in with it. No problem.
Okay, so the motion then reads wrestling to Orlando, boys soccer to Strongsville, and volleyball to Cedar Point Convention Center. Correct?
Yep, and the last one is health, or health.
And we're going to full premier. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mr. Zavinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Muller?
Yes. Item C is the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission. That's what Mrs. Ruth was speaking about. We need a motion to approve that resolution, can I have a motion, please?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Zavinsky?
Yeah.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Item C is the sale of land. We need a motion to approve the sale of land. Resolution has been distributed to the board. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Under discussion, that's the six acres on Wind Road to the city of Oregon. Any further discussion?
You know, I just, I had talked about, I'd like us to, you know, prior to the fourth teaching plan, but sit down and look at our list of land that we have and kind of make, have some sort of a plan on what we want to sell, what we could, we're willing to sell, what we want to hold onto, and just make sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I know we were headed down that way several years ago, I'm in full support of that, because I think, obviously, if there's some more land that people want, that we want to sell, we could, you know, use those funds, and then, I do know, each year we do collect rent from the open land, so it's not completely idle, and so we would just have to weigh out the rent versus the one-time cash that we would get more than.
And there's also a portion of scholarships that we have to maintain.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I remember from years ago that some of it is under conditions from what was given to us.
Yeah, I think we have one plot of land that may be, and I know there is some question as to, you know, who's still, you know, the family member, if there's still a family member that's connected to that or not, so we'll have to continue to do a little bit of research on that piece, but, yeah, we can do that. I think that might be something that would be real good, even for a finance committee, that we could bring it all within a finance committee meeting and kind of go through all that.
And we'll have to get a, I do think we need a legal, because when I spoke with legal every time about the scholarship amount, it's very clear that that has to, I didn't have a scholarship.
I remembered that from years ago.
Yeah.
Those are like clauses, do we have like the original, I'll say, contract that other was with that, that does it follow off after 20, 50 years, like?
It's not clear like that, no, of course not. There's never anything that simple, so, I mean, I wish it did, but no.
Yeah, I think you were quite true there.
But just, not to be devil down, I just.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zavinsky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes. Item E, disposal of equipment and materials, 200, I'm not going to read all the numbers, 275 PC towers, 20 laptops, one AM system, 16 Elmos, 25 projectors, 18 touchscreen monitors, 133 G Sonic monitors, 32 Apple TVs, 19 H printer, and approximately 275 books.
Here you go.
Can I have a motion to dispose of those, please?
So move.
So move. A second? Discussion? Roll call? Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Moller?
Yes. Okay, donations. Get some good ones this evening. We need a motion to accept the following donation. Rich and Marion Lenhart of Southwestern Industries Track Machine Tools is donating one track lathe, two track K three mini mills and accessories, valued at eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to our integrated machining and engineering program at Clay High School. This was made possible with the assistance and support of our local representative, Mr. Sean Ferguson. And we'll get to you in a second. The second donation is Anna Skinner, who donated hair color and satin products valued at four hundred and fifty dollars to the cosmetology program. Can I have a motion to accept those donations, please?
So move. A second? A third? Discussion? We'd like to hear your opinion, please.
You could, yeah, before the vote, or?
Discussion, sure.
Uh, so, um, so we're, we're pretty excited, I, I got an email on this a while back, and uh, this kind of came out of the blue, I had no, no idea, so, I don't know, Tony, uh, Tony Spelino is our teacher, would you mind coming up, bringing Sean, and just, maybe, Sean, maybe you give a little bit of the background for the, the owners of this company that made the donation, and, uh, just a brief description of what kids can do with these particular devices, and anything else you want to share? This is awesome, we, we, we can't believe the amount.
All right, uh, first of all, um, yes, I got a, a call, um, March seventeenth, uh, that was from California, it was from Rich Leonard, and, uh, he said that he and his wife had a program where they donated, uh, equipment to schools and, uh, programs like the one that we have, and, uh, that he got a letter, uh, from Sean Ferguson, uh, explaining why, uh, our school and, uh, our program would be, uh, one that would, was well received for, for, um, equipment like this. And then he went on to tell me that, uh, he was donating two mills and, and a lathe, and these are not just, uh, you know, you run a mill, mills, but, uh, they, what, what they can do is they can be programmed, so they're, uh, computer numerical control, uh, and same with the lathe, so the students can run manually and program them, and I'll let Sean, uh, say a little bit more about those, but these are machines that are brand new, first of all, uh, they're right out of the factory, and the, these, um, this equipment is out at the shops where our students go to work at, so, uh, you know, technology that is out there right now, so this is great. And without Sean, um, writing this letter and, you know, letting us, letting them know about our program, you know, this would have never happened, so I'm, I'm, I'm really grateful to Sean here for doing that, so.
Yes, as are we.
So my name's Sean Ferguson, uh, evening everyone, um, about two months ago, I got a email from Rich and Marion asking for suggestions about our donation program that we sometimes do. Uh, I cover Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, Kentucky, and as soon as I heard what the machines were, uh, and the general premise of this donation program for this year, I couldn't think of anybody other than Tony at Clay High School. I've known Tony for a good ten years now, he has a superior program, um, and it's hard not to find a student around this general Ohio area that doesn't either know Tony, or knows someone that knows Tony, or has gone through his program, uh, or has, or gone through his program themselves, so it's a no-brainer. Um, the thing about me is I did ten minutes worth of work, all the hard work over these last decades has been done by Tony and the administration here, I filled out two pieces of paperwork, talked to Rich and Marion for about four minutes, and that's my contribution. It's all Tony and everyone here, so if you could give yourselves a round of applause, especially Tony. It was an easy sell for Rich and Marion, and Rich is a hard sell, but it was an easy sell, all I had to do was send him a couple of website links for Tony's program, a little write-up, it was, it was a good ten minutes worth of work, it, you, it made my job really easy. Well, my pleasure, thank you, because the more students that graduate from his program, the easier it is for me to sell Protrax track machine tools into the shops. It's easy to sell someone a fifty thousand dollar machine tool, tell them all the cool things it's gonna do, but you gotta have someone standing in front of them, and that's what we need desperately, and Tony's been creating excellent, excellent apprentices, and machine tool, uh, operators and machinists, and it was, it was an easy sell for Rich. Now, the machines themselves, like Tony was saying, they're hybrid CNC machines. If you walk into Tony's shop right now, every single one of those machines, except for maybe two of them, have handles, and you grab out of those handles and you make the piece you want to do. That's great if you're making a very simple part, or something that you can do very simply, when you need to say make something more complex, you let the machine do the work. So we can do both, the best of both worlds here with all the equipment that, uh, we're gonna provide to Clay High School. So that's the general premise, and, did I miss anything?
When will the equipment arrive? Is that something that?
When did, uh, late summer?
Uh, yes, uh, it's gonna be shipped out from, from.
Yeah, so let's say we've got, um, place sometime, let's say July, before, uh, before the beginning of fall, um, Tony's well versed in Protrax already, the only thing I'm gonna do is train him up a little bit on how our lathe works, but knowing Tony, he's probably gonna get it figured out before I even get from Michigan to the Ohio border, before I, you know, step out of the car, so.
Tony, you got room for it, you got to do some big preparations?
Uh, we have to be con, we have some, uh, lathes right now, uh, two of them are from the nineteen sixties that, uh, we're gonna put out on eBay or, or dispose, I have one lathe from nineteen fifty-two, um, but I'm gonna hang on to that one, the other two lathes are, one's from nineteen something eight, the other one's from nineteen eighty-four. So this is a, well, you know, this is, we, we needed this, so, uh, well, I mean, uh, I'm not complaining about the machines we've had, because, uh, they've been good for our students, um, but, uh, it was time that we now get some lathes that have, uh, the ability to program them as well, just, uh, protect them from the manual breaking.
Well, please, uh, you know, pass along our thanks, uh, to Marion Leonard, or Marion and, and Rich Leonard, uh, and, and if there's any way that, that I could have a conversation with them, and we could maybe set something up like that, that would be, that would be wonderful to, to give our thanks to them, but, true. Thank you for coming tonight, Sean and Tony, congratulations on the, uh, new tools, and that we look forward to, uh, seeing the kids use them, so thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
We're very, very grateful.
I know they'll be in well-placed.
Can I have a roll call, then?
Mrs. Miller? Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Moller?
Yes. Item G, administrative, administrative and supervisor pay and benefits package, we need a motion to approve the following. Administrative pay and benefits effective August first, twenty twenty, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Supervisor pay and benefits package effective August first, twenty twenty, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And item three, to make whole supervisors, administrators whose pay and benefits were previously frozen by renewing the administrative pay and benefits plan effective retroactively from August first, twenty twenty, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and by authorizing payments of the retroactive portion to former administrators and supervisors as long as they would have qualified for the pay and benefits under the plan while employed, and they receive no more than a retroactive amount owed for the time that they were actually employed from August first, twenty twenty, until the effective date of their separation from the district. Any other motion, please?
So move. May I have a second? Our second? Discussion?
Yeah, hell, on one and two?
Mm-hmm.
We could kind of retroback to this school year and then cover the next school year?
Just the two years, and, uh, typically, just so the board kind of remembers, because the COVID's thrown us all off a little bit, and this is a direct result of kind of COVID throwing our typical process off, uh, at the time of negotiations with both OCFT and O, uh, OC, uh, we typically do an update or change, if there are any, to the administrative pay for the same time period, which is often three years, not every time, but often three years. Well, we had the three-year contracts ratified by, by both of those organizations, but we only did a one-year administrative, uh, period back in, uh, well, it would have been, what, the nineteen, the nineteen-twenty school year?
How, and so, that's when, back in that one, that's when we split the administrator from the?
Correct.
Teacher.
Correct.
Contract.
Correct, correct. That's why we did the one, the one year, we were, we were gonna research a little bit and, and do a little bit more about talking about, uh, um, ranges and so forth. So, what, what we're presenting to you is, uh, is this current year, because we're, we're being paid under a certain way, but, but, but the real part is what, what, what Mr. Zavisky said is we're requesting, I'm requesting, I guess, from the board to retroactively provide the increases that, I guess, typically would have happened, we took a freeze as an administrator team when it was very uncertain about our financial situation going into COVID, and a lot has changed in a positive way, in a great way, uh, for the district, uh, since that time, and so I feel, uh, I guess, a, a sense to, or an obligation, and a, and I know how hard our administrators have worked through, throughout this process, probably harder than they've ever worked in their life, uh, going through COVID, so, uh, again, the, the, there's really nothing structurally different within these packages, except, uh, it's retroactive for this current year and then for next year, uh, with the increases the same as both OCFT and OC.
So for the, I'll say the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, what's the rate?
Two, two point seven.
Seven five.
Yeah. Two point seven five.
Okay, and that's really the, things that, structurally the same, we didn't do really any changes to the, I mean, the benefits, and has that language, or?
Yeah, the benefits all remain, it's, it's, it's the same, I mean, there, there's really nothing that changes, I mean, um, in that, and so, uh, the only real thing is that we're, we have to approve it at some point, because, uh, Jay can't pay anybody without the approval of the benefits and that packages, but the key part is the retroactive part that, you know, here we sit in April, but, uh, going back through the course of, of the year, if you will, uh, the two point eight five for this current year.
And that's that we, uh, suddenly one and two in the vote, and three of the stuff as well?
And just so you know, on three, that was, we had an administrator retire, and so in order to?
Legally give her.
Legally give that individual, when she was here, the amounts, that's why three is on there, does that make sense? Okay.
That's the only reason, yeah.
All right.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Moller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich? So, a second? Our second? Discussion?
Yeah, so, and the first I'm hearing of the, uh, how we approved some back in April, this, that, oh, like, that the lathe, that was, that were delayed.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
The second stuff of that.
Yeah, this is, this is another phase in, if you will, of our, so we've been having a lot of discussion about what's the right way to move forward with Chromebooks, you know what I mean, we, we've been having, I mean, so we, there's, there's several factors that go in with these here Chromebooks that I'm learning about, Miss Shaboni's here, so if I can, if I say it wrong, tell me, but the bottom line is, there's, there's the Chromebook itself, right? Chromebook itself's lifespan's usually pretty good, pretty long, probably longer, uh, than, uh, the software life. What the problem is, is that Chromebooks operating systems are only supported for so long, so the machine may keep going, but the operating system that it uses stops. Well, the problem is, is when that operating system is no longer supported, what, but yet the state testing requirements keep pushing forward with the future or the newer operating systems, we're in a pickle, where we have these Chromebook devices that are usable and workable for kids and everything, but we run into upgrades in operating systems, so we're trying to balance that out. We also know our Facet, uh, uh, Chromebooks are getting older, that's the six hundred, five years, over, yeah, so, there, you know, that's where, if we just wanted to replace the Facet Chromebooks right now, that's the two hundred thousand, but do we look at the, all the district right now, and upgrading, or going through a lease process, where we can, I don't know, have them turn over more often than the operating systems would be, but we know we have to do something this, this year, and this, part of this money is what we expect to use some of those S R two funds for, uh, the technology piece, so I don't know if that explains it, we, we haven't nailed down which is the best, best way to go yet, lease or?
Let's see, like, buy, through stuff that's things, we got the back of one, which is next up, six hundred, but where's the eighteen, do we just replace the bunch?
Now, here's what, it's, okay, where I understand, and it's like, we have to worry about, was it elementary, elementary?
Second grade through eighth grade.
Yeah, and the whole thing is like, when I've been talking to Dawn, it's like, we kind of want to get on a schedule so that we know how much to budget every year, and we're slowly on a replacement cycle.
So like eighteen, hundred, six hundred each year for three years?
Or five, or four, we have to look at what, what the, what that amount, but what Dawn's saying is, it's not gonna be any more than that six twenty-five over the course of, of the five years, so split.
Yeah, so two hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, exactly.
If we do that, uh, for you. Yeah.
So, I got two more questions on that. Is the supply freed up now? When we order them, we will, we'll get them, and we'll be tied up, and, and we'll be expecting them to not get them?
There are some brands that are still a little delayed, and other brands that are arriving within a week, so it does vary from, um, company to company and processor to processor.
Does this have any trade-in value that would reduce our out-of-pocket?
Negligible. But we will try.
The ones we did in April, remember that one, were those, we bought those or leased those?
We bought those outright.
Yeah.
So I guess the next question, final, is, why would we bring this to the board now? We don't know which way, why not continue to do the homework and bring the fast and concrete plan forward in the next month?
Yep, so, it's, it's, I guess, it's the question of, here, here, here's what we don't know, we don't know until August what operating system the state is gonna say, and so we're at a point where that operating system could be, uh, we, we could be in, you know, we could be, we could be in trouble with the current, uh, machines that we have, so it's a risk. We, we've had that discussion, is now the right time, or is next year the right time? So, to answer your question, it's a, it's a risk, i- if we don't.
No, I'm not saying that one, you don't know which way you want to go, so why would I, I mean, there's two different, you're spending two hundred thousand or six hundred twenty-five thousand, some kind of two separate things, so why wouldn't we just wait till you guys decide if we wanna purchase the two hundred or enter into a lease?
Time you'll?
Go that option.
Right, so Dawn?
It, it allows us, it, it allows us to, I, I can tell you that the lease is probably the most logical way to go, it gives our district a consistent model across the board, which gives us a lot more flexibility from grade levels and spares and things like that, as opposed to waiting and buying in chunks, so that, uh, we may have a different model next year, so now we, and, we enter, you know, an additional model, um, and, and it also, um, it, it allows us to, um, be prepared, not just for this year, but the, but the following years down the line. Um, the purchase, uh, is an option, but the lease is, is probably, if you're asking for a, a decision, the lease is probably?
Approve both, and have you guys, you know, why not do the homework and come back with the concrete plan, which one is the best?
I, I don't think it's a matter of, of doing the homework, they're both equal, it doesn't matter necessarily whether we go with six hundred now or eighteen hundred now, because if we only go six hundred now, we're gonna have to do twelve hundred next year.
So what's the additional twenty-five thousand for?
Uh, generally, when you enter into a lease, there's a little bit of a, a processing finance charge.
It's a little lower than that, based on current interest rates, but we'll find out that later.
Right, right.
What is the, the, like, that we do three to five years, what's kind of the, the plan? That's, you know, we, we did, was it high school, like, I know my freshman got one, um, we did high school, that's as fast, so it is the eighteen hundred kind of, then the next three, we, we do year one fast, and then year two or three is the elementary refresh, is that kind of like the?
Um.
I guess your, your schedule.
Yeah, yeah, what it is, Mr. Zavisky, is that the, uh, the devices in grades two through, uh, eight currently have an expiration date, if you will, like how, uh, Mr. Gregory was explaining, um, of, of summer of twenty twenty-two. Okay, so what that means is, is that in August of twenty twenty-two, the state could make those not a viable device to use for state testing, though they would be perfect to use for, um, for everyday classroom use, um, so, so, um, the eighteen hundred is seven, eight, six hundred, approximately, five, six, six hundred, two, four, six hundred, okay, so that's what makes up the eighteen hundred, and the K two devices are slight, or K one devices are slightly different, and they don't, quote, expire until, uh, twenty twenty-four, I believe.
Like, some of the ones we bought?
They are the touchscreen ones that the kindergarten, it's first grade use.
At some point, we'll be able to slow those down to the, the one that, you know, the K two-two, once we start with the?
So they, right, so the K two?
We can slow those down as they take over.
Um, I don't know about floating them down, but we would refresh the K one devices when, when necessary. And, and like, uh, Mrs. Prue said, it gives us that opportunity, uh, a lot, all of this gives us that opportunity to begin to create, you know, almost a five or six-year logical rotation, where we don't have to have these questions down the line, it's just kind of a, a, an. where we don't have to have these questions down the line. It's just kind of a an ebb and flow. And we're prepared and we're in a position to get us to that point with this.
Going back and forth between, you know, the Mac books, the laptop, the Chromebooks, buy, lease. So we couldn't know that we're going, we're looking at a specific model and kind of fit with that. So one, depending, you can't know what to expect as far as the device.
That's, yeah, that's definitely a benefit of entering into the lease because not only from that perspective, but also from our perspective, from a support and spare parts and repairs and all of that stuff. It really does benefit us to to jump now and enter into the lease. And and again, the the number of years basically just says, takes that 625 and divided by three, divided by four, divided by five, you know, and and looking at what's going to make the best logical plan to then be ready when we need to do those K one devices. And then when we need to do the Clay High School devices, thinking even down that far.
Thank you, Mr. Zbyski. Any further questions? Role call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
We are down to the session.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Don't have too long of report here, but there's obviously there's a little thing there. It says Oregon State Schools currently complying with standards of Setville 210 governing the type of food and beverages sold. So that's just something that we have to acknowledge. So my report, yeah, you probably know more about that than I do. Certainly, I guess I just want to open with thanking all of you for the support tonight and all the time, but tonight specifically for the support for our district administrators, myself, Jane, and our entire team. So I really appreciate, you know, your support of me in particular and I look forward, obviously, the next several years to continuing to support the district, move forward. I'm hoping it's not a year like this past. I hope we put that behind us and focus on the things that that we were focusing on moving forward. So again, I sincerely thank you for your support over all these years, for me and for the entire administrative team. So thank you very much.
You know, on that, I know we thought about this, but your plan is coming to the kind of strategic plan, maybe.
Yes, absolutely.
And a succession plan, like said, as you wind out, you know, the end of your contract.
Yeah, I mean.
If we have improvement.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, there's there's always, there's always a point in time and, you know, change in districts, you know, leadership and board and that type of thing. And I think in the course of the next several years, again, there's going to be some, some of us that may choose to to move on or retire or change and do types of things like that, along with board members that may change. Obviously, who do we want to have? Paul tonight, you know, it's his first board meeting and we have board elections in November. So I think it's a very good time to start really having some strong conversations about, you know, long term planning, certainly three, four, or five years out, looking at a strategic plan and seeing, you know, making sure that 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 no matter what happens, you know, the district doesn't skip a beat. So.
We had talked about that and we decided it would be better to do the strategic plan starting in January. Start looking at it now, but make a plan to have a meeting in January with all the board, make it a Saturday and put a new strategic plan in place. Start looking now, start thinking, but actually do that strategic plan in January, February, after we see this on board.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think, you know, we're in a great position to to start looking forward. And then once we know, again, you know, this board is as good as, you know, you guys are great. Like, we can start the process, but just knowing that probably the official process can start next January when when elections happen and I will all do that. That would be fantastic. Because, you know, continuity is what keeps districts moving forward. So just moving moving forward, not that I want to talk about COVID all night, but just to give you an update on the stats. Here's the stats. It's felt like we've had a little bit of a spike here in the last couple of weeks, but when you look at the numbers, they're they're not, I mean, when you're dealing with it day to day, it feels overwhelming, but the numbers are the numbers. So if you look as of today, we've had 239 total positive cases between staff and students. All right. We had one more at the end of today I didn't put in, so actually that number is 240. But if you look at that chart that I have there, it kind of shows how many by month. So you can see the spikes for students were in November and January. And now we've got a kind of a higher number here in April at 23 so far. And we still, you know, have several weeks here, a couple of weeks ago. So I'm assuming that that's going to continue to go up a tad here by the by the end of the year. So we're definitely seeing our kids primarily a facet in Clay. Got a few at the elementary levels, but primarily a facet in Clay. So, you know, again, we're working through all those situations. We had changing the quarantine from 14 to 10 days. That is, that started this week. So there were some families kind of caught between 14 and 10, you know, not sure what to do, just because of timing. But the majority of the districts in Lucas County have made that switch here in the last probably two to three weeks, which is a big deal when you're talking about keeping kids out of school or keeping kids out of their school or keeping kids out of anything that they're interested in.
On calendar days, not.
Correct, correct. Yes. So anyways, you can see the numbers there. Fifteen percent of our staff have been, you know, positive over the course, but we haven't had many staff, as you can see, for the last three months. Only one in February, one in March, one in April. So.
What percent of that?
Oh, it's it's got, it's at least at 85%. And that's when I counted. But I I believe it's higher because some people did it outside the K 12 process. And I I have not reached out to the individuals, you know, I just don't feel that's my place. So, but we're definitely at 85% of the staff.
How successful, I'm sorry. Yeah, how successful was the turnout for the clinic?
Yeah, the the turnout for clinics everywhere is way down. I had a lot of conversations that particular night. We had held, hosted a Clay pod last Thursday, it was, or last Thursday, and we'll have another one three weeks from last Thursday for the second shot. But we had, I was told, 375 scheduled appointments out of a possible thousand. So and and those weren't all our students. So I can't say exactly how many students we heard or we had, but it wasn't over 100. Because a lot of, because it was, that opened up a lot of community. So I don't know, you know, we're at the hard part. The people who wanted the vaccination have gotten it. The people that are unsure or say no are the ones that, you know, are going to get it or we're still going to have to try to convince to you. I, you know, when you look at just our numbers and if you equate the numbers being very, very low in positives to the vaccinations, right, and it almost feels like it's pretty coincidental that all of a sudden, there's no more positives in our staff after vaccinations. So obviously, in my mind, vaccinations work. So I would encourage the public, you know, I get backlash when I say get the shot. I get backlash when I say don't get the shot. But but I I feel personally that is a benefit. And when I look at our own particular numbers here within our Oregon City Schools for our staff who's paid to the base. Any questions on the COVID? Okay, just a quick kindergarten information. A webinar is tomorrow night at six. And the only reason I bring that up is I just want to have all of us go out and try to encourage as many families that you know to enroll their kids. We want to get our numbers up. The kindergarten class we have this year is the lowest we've had ever, around 210 kids. So we we hope that this year is going to be higher. I was talking to our enrollment secretary this morning, and she she has a feeling it's going to be higher, just based on the calls. You know, it's got feelings, no solid numbers on that, but that's good thing. We want to get our kids and we want to get those numbers up.
Now, on that, with some of the stuff, city's doing with the development stuff, the YMCA and the, it's how it's running, with the department, how it's, it's not, if we have, when they get that fill, it's a family, but we have, we're, I had not sure what district, elementary district, that area is in, probably coy.
I'm assuming that's coy on the on that side of the bar.
It's based on that, we think, whether they're too, in terms of additional.
Yeah, we we are absolutely able to take on more kids. We've been through the course of probably the last 10 years, you know, adjusting our staffing and elementary levels to where pretty much coy and Jerusalem are at three teachers per grade level. We have like one level group, I think, and each star is still at four at the grade level. But we're down at least six, probably five or six, you know, teachers, if you will, from, you know, enrollment purposes over the course of the year. So we can certainly absorb those. We have the classrooms. We have the physical space. I'm not worried about the physical.
Yeah, we have win also.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I guess we ever needed win too.
But for coy, we wouldn't have to, you know, remove people out of school from that. We should be able to.
No, because if you look at our enrollment, we still have, except for a couple of grade levels, we still have quite a few openings within each grade level. So we'll be able to absorb that. I feel very confident. And actually, I'm hoping for that. I would love that problem. You know, I want to stabilize and not be a declining enrollment district, but be at least a stabilized and possibly a growing district. Again, that would be fantastic.
Also, if we really go again, maybe one more time, we're supposed to move it. I'm not saying that, but.
Yeah.
It's, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's another, our typical enrollment is majority of young kids in kindergarten and then sprinkling all the way up. And it looks like that will be done this year. All right. So N L L, this is a big deal tonight. There's a lot of people waiting for these votes to happen. So again, thank you. I just kind of want to read a statement that I want to kind of read to the public. I want to, okay, so I want to thank you to the Board of Education for the support in joining the Northern Lakes League, N L L, beginning in the 23, 24 school year. If it's earlier, wonderful. You know, if that were to happen, we'd be ecstatic. We are one of four new schools who will be joining this premier sports league in the state of Ohio, including Whitmer High School, Findlay High School, and Fremont Ross High School. This is a very good move for Clay, allowing for a strong competitive environment, limited travel, and excellent fan experiences. And I just want to kind of emphasize that. Going around to the N L L schools, I'm very excited about what we're going to experience new and different for our kids and for our fans. The N L, the N L L schools have outstanding school traditions. They have strong academics and they have influential school leaders. I want to personally thank the N L L Commissioner, Richard Brown, the N L L high school principals, who actually are the ones who do the vote for the invites, certainly the athletic directors and the superintendents for having faith in Clay High School and Oregon City Schools and inviting us to be part of the N L L. So I, this is something that I, since I have been here for, certainly as superintendent, but even as assistant superintendent, since the track was formed, there's been conversations out and about. And have it to happen kind of in a pretty quick fashion, right? There was a lot of talk and all of a sudden, there was a lot of talk. And and within a few months' time period, it came together. Just so you know how the divisions line up, there are, at least at this point in time, there are planned to be two divisions, a large and a small. We are planning to be in the small division at this time. Mr. Beach and Mr. Jersey will be participating in the N L L planning meetings moving forward. So they're going to begin to get involved and be part of the decision-making process moving forward. Again, we will be officially notifying the track after this vote tonight, Clay's departure here shortly. And just if you if you just kind of scroll in the back of the page there, there's the division. So right now, as it stands, the large division would be Whitmer, Perrysburg, Findlay, Anthony Wayne, Savannah, Northview, and Fremont Ross. And then smaller division would be Springfield, Clay, Savannah, Southview, Boeing, Green, and Napoleon. And you see, there's an unbalanced league there. And I think there's, there's hope that there might be another small school that possibly comes in at some point. Not really have no inside knowledge on that, but I think there's still talk about some other leagues and some other changes that could happen. Again, you know, until it happens, you don't know. But that's, that's the way it's shaking out right now. So again, thank you for the support ever since the talk started. I knew we got an invite that the board would support that move. And I know many of our coaches and community members are excited about that. So that's my report. If there's any questions.
Any questions from anyone? Please, thank you. Very great. On your own business, A, policies, the policies that were presented for the first reading in hearts are now being recommended for adoption. So I need to motion for that those policies. So a second? A second discussion? Role call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Magich?
Yes.
And Mr. Zbyski?
No.
Board committee reports, finance. We have one media file. Kid improvement that was key, policy personnel, that's policy for each of the doctors. This evening, you think you could name that?
Eddie Young.
Hi, you guys hit on pretty much what I had. Just what Jane said, your, our first school tutoring hasn't started. So that's it. But then a follow up on the kindergarten night, I did have one parent ask me, what if I'm going to miss this meeting? And Jeb did say that it would be reported and posted to the website. So if anyone misses that timeframe, it will be reported and they can revisit that.
Yeah, and just in case there's any questions, you know, for years and years and years, we did an in-person kindergarten information night, and parents actually signed up for a scheduled appointment to come in and register or whatever. And COVID kind of, you know, put that by the wayside. We actually found we liked the process. And so we're going to push out the information that people want. They can see it in their own homes and then get an appointment, just get going. And it's really the same thing. And so it worked out pretty well last year. And so I think we may continue this kind of rollout moving forward.
Here, our media sounds legislative this night. We actually, you may want to report. For discussion, I would like to welcome Mr. Magich.
We're very happy to have you. Thank you for taking the appointment. You will either enjoy it or not so much. But we're glad to get.
You know what? I can go either way. It's get late and you can, I just, I have a couple, if we go into that discussion for maybe 10 minutes, Matt, I have a couple things I could like to share. It doesn't have to happen. I mean, I want to, let's just not, I want to have a little word for some of them.
Next regular meeting is the 18th, right here in the meeting center. Anything else for the discussion? Okay, need to motion for press. Some more discussion? Role call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zbyski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
And thank you for your work on this year.